Since everybody's here, if we can call the meeting to order and have a roll call, please, Mrs. Nash.
Mr. Gomes?
Here.
Mrs. Boland?
Here.
Ms. Boatright?
Here.
Mr. Dring?
Here.
Dr. Flowers?
Here.
Mr. Leary?
Here.
And Ms. Winslow?
Here.
Thank you.
Alrighty. I don't see everybody. I'm looking around. Is Alice in here for the two leaders in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'm going to check the waiting room one more time. Give me one moment.
No problem.
I do not see Alice in here.
Alright. Well, we can go ahead and start the video and follow the prompts as they come along. The ROTC video.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, Vikings. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
And one nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty. That gets us to our next item is the moment of silence. Please keep the following individuals who have passed away in your thoughts and prayers. Thomas Johnston, father of Lisa Olinak, TMS teacher. Edward Vallas, father-in-law of Patrick Loggie, Rogers High School teacher. Joseph Perez, uncle of William Simmons, Thompson Middle School custodian. And Patricia Callahan, retired Thompson Middle School librarian. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. That leads us into our student council update. And this evening, I believe Maggie has a night off and Ella Walker is going to do the monthly report for her. And so I'll turn it over to Ella.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ella Walker. I'm the vice president of Student Council, filling in for Maggie tonight. RISAS is holding a presentation titled "The Social Ecology of Brazilians" with Dr. Michael Unger on March 10th at 6:30. The juniors will be taking the SATs on April 13th, while the sophomores will be taking the PSATs on April 14th. The seniors presented their senior projects on March 4th, and from what I heard, it all went well. Abby Kane is still collecting stuff to animals for the Alzheimer's patients at John Clark. You can email her at abigailkane21@newportschool.net with any questions. Boys' basketball made it to the quarterfinals but lost against Wheeler. Girls' basketball made it to the semifinals against Classical, but unfortunately lost as well. Swim lost the first round of playoffs against Classical. Volleyball and football started practice last week. Cheerleading is still looking for interested students who are ready to support the football team. They have a meeting on March 10th at 1:00. Mock Trial has lost their last trial, but competed in four trials. Anyone have any questions?
Becky, you're muted.
Yep. So my question is, has there been any discussion or ideas for graduation this year?
Yeah, I think the rumor going around right now is that we're trying to get graduation at Topher Field. So outside with everyone like together.
Wow, okay.
Thank you.
There's hope.
Any other questions for Ella? Go ahead, Jim. Mr. Dring.
Ella, are you guys gonna have a prom this year or anything at the end of the year?
Yeah, the senior prom is June 8th, I believe, at the Boland. So downtown, like underneath the 10th.
Great, glad to hear it.
I thought she said the Boland's were hosting. I was coming to Becky's backyard. Any other comments or questions for Ella? Alright, thank you very much, Ella.
Thank you.
Next item is into our recognition and certificates of achievement. The first one is the recognition of school nurses and school nurse teachers. And I know that we're going to postpone this recognition to next month. Some of the nurses, nurse teachers had a conflict with this evening and couldn't be here, so we want them all to be able to join us. I know they've done a fantastic job, and I think Dr. Jermaine just wants to say a few words before we put them off for a month.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Gomes. Yes, I did want to bring everyone's attention to our, I'll call them our superheroes, the nurses. They have been unbelievable. And they are so unbelievable that tonight, some of them are in their master's classes. They're studying for their masters. Others are learning Spanish. We offered Spanish for teachers. So they have a Spanish class tonight with Roger Williams that they need to wrap up. But we're looking forward to celebrating them, and we just wanted to have all of them on the screen. So we didn't want to just do it for one or two that could be here tonight. So we will see them next month. But I think for the public, and everyone should know, the nurses have been tireless in their efforts since COVID hit. They have been almost every weekend on the phone, helping us with contact tracing, calling parents, calling families. And they still continue to do the 24/7 for all of us to keep us all safe and keep us calm. So I just want to thank Nurse Carolyn Martin, Nurse Maureen Grimes, Nurse Lisa Butterball, and Nurse Sarah Claudio. They've been fantastic, and I look forward to celebrating them next month. Thank you.
Fantastic. So we look forward to that and put that off for a little while so they can all be here. That takes us to our next recognition is our student recognition for the Rogers High School Science and Engineering Fair Awards. Mr. Nash, I don't know if you need a minute to invite anybody in or...
Yes, please. I'm going to bring them in one by one right now. Thank you.
Alrighty. And once we get them all in, I'll read through the list and what their projects were, and then I'll turn it over. I know I see Mrs. Zilly here, so I'll turn it over to her to say a few words after we recognize the kids. Students, I should say, for their outstanding work.
Mr. Gomes, I believe our students are all on the panel at this time.
Oh, great. Well, thank you. Thank you to all our students for joining us. And again, to Mrs. Zilly for all her hard work and making sure they were recognized. She put together an awesome video that the link is on our website, and people can look at that later. I am going to read down through the categories, recognize the students. So the students, as I say your name, if you want to give a wave and thumbs up or whatever you might want to do, it's all up to you. But I'll go slowly through the names. Excuse me. Read the categories and the title of their project. Some of them were fascinating, so I'm sure they were terrific projects. So we'll start with the engineering category. First place, we had Theo Henson, and it was "Keep Your Eyes on the Road: Creating a Driver Monitoring System." So I see Theo there. Second place was John Gleason, a grade point average calculator. And the honorable mention in the engineering category was Ella Walker with a "Snore No More" project. So that leads us into the science category. In first place, we had Pauline Cooper with a "Face Covering Effectiveness Project." Second place was Taylor Curry with a "Crystallization of Honey" project. Third place was Delaney Govea, "Paper Towel Absorbency." And then we had a category of top finishers. There's a few in that. And there was Maya Brooks and Grace Cicerini with the "PH Levels and Its Effect on Limestone." Riley Ferreira, "Store Brand Ivy Profin Dissolution." Reese Prater, "The Most Effective COVID-19 Face Mask." We had Megan Maradou with the "How Does the Loft of a Golf Club Affect the Distance and the Height the Ball Travels?" But there's a lot of people interested in that. Sam Cullen and Dylan Walker for "Does Density Have an Effect on the Time It Takes a Liquid to Freeze?" We have Kalisha Abdullah and Delicia Allen for "The Science Behind Music and Focus." Faye Dickerson, I'm sorry, in this category is honorable mention. Faye Dickerson for "Bacteria Versus Hand Sanitizer in a COVID World." And finally, Catherine D'Angelo for "The Effects of Harsh Conditions on Plants." So congratulations to all the students for their great work. The science fairs in the "normal world" is always a highlight to come in and see the projects. But we look forward to getting back to that next year. With that said, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Zilly if she'd like to say a few words and wrap it up for us.
Thank you, Mr. Gomes.
You're welcome.
Thank you, School Committee and Superintendent Jermaine. Thank you so much for recognizing these students. They worked so very hard this year. We started back in October, and they absolutely went along with this crazy ride as we did it because we were building the plane as it was happening, and they totally adjusted and went with it and did really, really high-quality projects, even in such a challenging environment where they couldn't have the partnerships we typically can have with neighboring colleges and companies and whatnot. These students did a really, really nice job. And the students who were place finishers are going to represent Rogers High School this weekend at the state science fair. So we're very excited about seeing how they do against others around the state. So we'll keep you posted about how that goes. But they were unbelievable. Their families were so supportive, and the students did an amazing, amazing job this year. So we're very, very proud of them and happy for all the work that they did. So thank you, students. You were awesome. You did such a nice job. We appreciate it, and you made us so proud. So well, well done.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to ask if any of my colleagues on the school committee would like to ask any questions or have any comments of the students or from Mrs. Zilly. Go right ahead, Ms. Winslow. I see your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Gomes. Actually, I was wondering, I watched the video, but I was curious to know if you can actually see any of these projects anywhere or like read the presentations or whatever the kids might have done. Or maybe that could happen at this weekend's fair? If that's going to be virtual?
Sure. So we could certainly, we have the students, you know, we did this on a Zoom this year rather than like doing it in the boards where people come and kind of are able to take in the exhibition. So we didn't record the students presenting on the Zoom because of how many breakout rooms we had and whatnot. But we certainly could come up with some way to share the presentations that they did so that you could kind of go through what they had done and take a look at that. That would be great. I would love to kind of brainstorm like what the best way might be to do that. We would definitely be open to that because the students did such a nice job. Awesome. Thank you.
Anybody else from the school committee? I think Becky's trying. Ms. Boland, go right ahead.
I just want to say, you know, I know it takes a lot of extra work to do that, Mrs. Zilly. And I want to thank you and anybody else in the science department that helped motivate these kids to be, you know, the very best they could be. And, you know, it might push some kids into some science fields. It's excellent all around. And thank you for doing this for all the kids here in Newport.
Thank you so much. The science department was very, very supportive. The students worked so hard. It was great. And actually, we have in a couple of weeks coming up, I haven't announced this to my students yet, but a former student of mine who kind of got the science fair back up and running and sort of put the pressure on us teachers about a decade ago to, you know, to go back into this. She now works for a biotech company up in New Hampshire, and she asked if we could do a panel where she could virtually, you know, have some of her colleagues talk to our students and share with them a little bit about taking the science and then turning it into a career. So we're looking forward to that in a few weeks as well. So kind of a little bit of full circle in this COVID world, some different ways to kind of, you know, take advantage of the technology.
So I had somebody from the audience want to know what grades were participated. You know, what made you eligible to do the science fair at the high school?
So typically, what we do is typically all chemistry students do it, which is usually 10th grade now. This year, we just had the honors level 10th graders do it. And then typically, the AP sciences, the AP Chemistry, AP Biology, and AP Physics typically take part in it. This year, it was open, kind of optional, to the AP Biology students to do so. We're not running AP Chemistry this year, and AP Physics decided not to go with it. So it was, this year, it was all the chemistry honors students, so mostly 10th graders. And then the 11th and 12th graders in AP Biology, they were eligible to do that. So Ms. Ella Walker, who presented for us, this is her third year in a row because she had need for chemistry in 10th grade, and then last year in AP Physics, and then now this year in AP Bio. So she's done this three times and actually placed every year. So good for her. But that's typically what we have do. But everyone does it in chemistry, so right around 10th grade, they've all done it at least once. And then we hope to grab them another time, maybe in AP Science, to do it a second or sometimes a third time.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Any other comments from the school committee? Alright.
Just put my comment in the chat, but also just hope that they all have good success in the next round. And thank you very much.
Yes, good luck this weekend, and thank you all for being here. Thank you, Ms. Zilly. Of course, as always, for all your work with the kids and all you do. So thank you all, and keep up the good work, and we'll see you all soon.
Thank you both so much for recognizing the students. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Alrighty. So that brings us into public comment. And I believe Mrs. Nash has told me that we have some folks signed up for public comment this evening. Just a few reminders on the public comment. When you, it is your turn, please stop by stating your name and your address for the public record. Your comments are all three minutes in duration, as you've all been made aware of ahead of time. And I'll ask Mrs. Nash for the first name up on public comment.
We have Kendra Munter.
Alright, so Kendra, if you could, obviously, we know it's Kendra, but if you could state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Kendra, will you please raise your hand if you're in the waiting room? Okay, I do not see Mrs. Munter in the waiting room.
She says she's in the car driving home and that she can't raise her hand.
Okay.
Is she on, though, somewhere?
She called in. Can we maybe go back to her because she'll be home in just a few minutes?
Sure.
Yep, we'll move along and then come back. So Mrs. Nash, the next person up?
Mr. Moochi.
Alright, Mr. Moochi, if you're with us, if you could state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes for your comments.
Can you hear me? Hello? Oh, you can. Okay. My name is Dan Muachi. I live at 99 Cog Shell Avenue. I'm 75 years old, a veteran, Catholic, college graduate, teacher, educator, and Newport resident since 1985. I'm not a racist. After my article, "BLM: A Trojan Horse," in Newport appeared in two local papers, I have been called a racist by people who I've never met. A few of those people, unfortunately, are on the committee that I'm talking to right now. "Black Lives Matter" is a declarative sentence. It expresses a very strong emotion. I agree and support this definition. But my article, however, and let me make clear, we are talking about something entirely different, both the symbol and the organization. Today, "Black Lives Matter" and the decal, which is posted in Rogers High School gym, symbolizes the organization which stands for "Defunding the Police, Searching for Mythical Systemic Racism in Our School and Community at Large, and Demanding Everyone Give Up Their White Privilege." The founders of BLM are avowed Marxists, trained community organizers who spread their vicious accusations at anyone who refuses to bow down to their demand for social justice. People, I'm telling you right now, justice needs no modifier. I stand by my article and request the school committee remove all symbols of "Black Lives Matter" in our schools. Also, I want the school committee to investigate other parts of the BLM program currently being used in many schools. That means getting rid of copies of the fictitious 1619 Project books, all of Howard Zinn's history books, and all the Black Lives Matter workbooks. Many of these books are based on the fiction of Harvard's Critical Race Theory and Critical Equity Theory, currently in vogue at many of our woke prestigious colleges and universities like Yale and Harvard. Here is the good news. My article, after it was printed on February 17th, I received an outpouring of support in the community. Teachers, policemen, firemen, laborers, store owners, and average people on the street. They understand the dangers that BLM sends to our children. To hate police, defund them, look for microaggressions, to protest, and monitor anyone who supports their fake agenda. Again, I end with "Black Lives Matter teaches children K through 12 to embrace Marxist principles of the left, hate our founders, our Constitution, the rule of law, and our capitalist system, which has literally risen hundreds of millions of people globally up from poverty." Black Lives Matter also leaves our schools mired in racial tension. Thank you for listening to my message, and I hope you will take me seriously. And I hope you take this to another meeting and understand that we're not against "Black Lives Matter" as a declarative sentence. We all believe in that, just like we do for every other race, color, and creed. But it's important to understand...
Mr. Moochi, if you could wrap up, please.
Okay, I'm going to wrap it up. I just want you to consider this and take action so we no longer have this type of anti-Americanism going on in our schools. Thank you very much, and I hope you all have a very good evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Nash, do we have the next person up for public comment?
Yes, we have Melody O'Brien.
Okay, Mrs. O'Brien, if you could state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes for your segment and public comment.
Hello?
Mrs. O'Brien? Thank you.
So my name is Melody O'Brien. I live at 2-3 Sergeant Greenway in Newport. My comment is to rebut exactly what Mr. Manucci just said. He he claims that "Black Lives Matter" is an organization that is a Marxist socialist left organization, and he's furthest from the truth. The Black Lives Organization and the whole movement of "Black Lives Matter" is just that, to state, "Black Lives Matter." And until "Black Lives Matter," no lives matter. Our children, especially our black children in the school system in Newport, have the right to say their lives matter. They have the right to feel like they matter within our school system and within our city, especially when the city of Newport and the school department push this one Newport narrative. If they are made to remove the decal, we are now sending our students, especially our students of color and black children, the message that they don't count, that they don't matter. And that is so detrimental to their health and well-being. I think Mr. Manucci fails to realize the oppression that our children still face within our school department and in our city. I think he, as a white man, does not understand what it means to be a black child in the city, especially when the N-word is thrown around at city council meetings, and there are people on our city council who ignore it and say there's no racism in the city. He is proving that there is racism in the city because he is making up a false narrative about a movement he has no part of, that has nothing to do with him as a white man. But his fear, as a white man, that this city in this country is becoming too brown for his liking, he is going to come now and try to remove a vinyl decal that was placed there by students who feel that their lives matter. Thank you for listening. I believe my three minutes are up. Have a great day.
Thank you. And Mrs. Nash, do we have another person for public comment this evening?
Ellen Pinnock.
Alright. Ms. Pinnock, if you could state your name and address, and as we've said, you have three minutes for your comments, so.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Pinnock. I live at 220 Maple Avenue in the north end of Newport. And my comment is also a rebuttal to Dan Muachi. And first thing I would like to say is that misinformation is never going to go away. It's always there. It's really easy to Google things on the internet and then come up with this whole narrative about exactly what "Black Lives Matter" is. And if you don't live a black life, you don't understand why we say "Black Lives Matter." Maybe some of you do understand, but you can't exactly relate to the things that we go through. The next thing I want to say is that the State Department of the United States keeps a list of terrorist organizations, domestic terrorist organizations. And "Black Lives Matter" is not on that list for terrorist organizations. The other part of that is that our children, I have a black daughter. My daughter's been in Newport Public Schools her entire life. She's an 11th grade student at Rogers High School. And I've been a Newporter born and raised. I'm well aware of the racist stuff that goes on here, of the separatism that goes on here, of the divisiveness of Newport. And we don't need that shoved in our faces constantly. We don't need to read about it. We know it's there, which is why we do the work that we do, trying to make Newport more progressive, trying to drag people along so that they can come to the same understanding that we have, that everybody that lives in Newport deserves to live here peacefully and not deal with the things that we've had to deal with because of people like Mr. Dan Muachi. The "Black Lives Matter" decal on the gym room floor, when I saw that posted on Instagram, my perspective of what I thought Rogers High School was changed significantly. I was very glad to see that they were trying to be more inclusive, that they were letting the students, black students and students of color, know that they deserve to be in Rogers High School, that their voices are heard, that they have a space there that is safe, and they're allowed to express themselves. safe, and they're allowed to express themselves. I was really glad to see that. And then to have to read his letter in the newspaper, which was full, I'm gonna call him misinformation because it's a school committee meeting, but it really was lies, really was, and nonsense. To read that and know that, like, he was not just putting his opinion in the newspaper, but also calling people to action, calling for the superintendent and other folks, school committee and everybody else, to be terminated because they were supporting students, black and brown students, and trying to be more inclusive, was just appalling to me. It truly was. So, as a black parent, as a black woman, as a Newport resident, a tax-paying resident, a mother of a child that goes to Rogers High School, I'm going to ask you to leave that decal where it is. Do not take away the little bit of voice that these students have had all these years. That's the end of my comment.
Mrs. Nash, do we have the next?
Yes, we have Letitia Michelle.
Ms. Michelle, if you could state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to make your comments.
Sure. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Letitia Michelle. I live at 33 West Evans Street in Newport, Rhode Island. I support the words of Melody O'Brien and Ellen Pinnock, and I would also like to say that the placement of the Black Lives Matter at Rogers High School is a light of hope in being more inclusive to the black community, and our hope is for it to stay there, and that is my request. Thank you.
Mrs. Nash?
We have Shannon Matos.
Okay. Ms. Matos, if you could give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes for your comments as well.
Ms. Matos, if you could raise your hand, please. Thank you.
Hello? Yep, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm Shannon Matos, and I live at 37 Sunset Boulevard in Newport. And I would like to just say that I fully support the Black Lives Matters logos, and it's staying on the gym floor at the high school. When the logo was put down, students of color got a sense of acceptance and pride this This morning, I learned that there was a move to have it removed. I was sick to my stomach, and I was in tears. Obviously, I'm upset now as well, thinking about it. One of my first thoughts with my kids, and how would I be able to explain why this is happening? I asked my son and a few other current student body members of color how they feel about this. They all questioned why somebody would want to do this. The response that I also got from them was that they are mad, they're hurt, they're sad, they're extremely disappointed, and this is just to name a few things that was said by them. They also all sent sad, crying, broken-hearted emojis as well. So, these kids are really affected by this. By removing the logo, it shows that the kids, it shows these kids what they already feel, that they don't matter. There's already a lack of representation when it comes to people of color in Newport schools, especially Thompson and Rogers, from the material that is posted in classrooms to the staff. If the removal of the logo goes through, we will stand together and we will fight it to the end. And one last thing that I just want to say is that I propose the Black Lives Matter decal is placed on Pell and Thompson gym floors as well. Thank you.
Ms. Nash, could we have the next-
Holly Fisher.
Ms. Fisher, if you could state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to make your comments.
Okay, I'm here. You can hear me now?
All right.
Yes, thank you.
I hope you heard me. If you could state your name and address, please, and then you'll have three minutes for your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Holly Fisher, and I live at 4 Pond Avenue. I support the voices of those who have rebutted Mr. Mucci's commentary, and I also feel strongly that the logo should stay on the gym floor. It goes without saying that all lives matter. Of course, all lives matter, but the lived experience of black people in America has shown again and again that their lives seem to matter less than white lives. But when we say Black Lives Matter, no one is saying that only black lives matter, and no one is saying that black lives matter more. What black people are saying, what they're begging and pleading for white people to understand is that black lives don't matter less. When a black child in Minneapolis, Minnesota, learned that George Floyd was murdered by a white police officer over a $20 bill, he understands that Floyd's life mattered less. That child learns that he matters less. When a black kid in Louisville, Kentucky, learns that Breonna Taylor was murdered also by a white police officer in her own bed while she was sleeping, she understands that Taylor's life mattered less. And when she learns that none of the officers involved have been held accountable for that murder, and she wonders, could she also be murdered by cops while she's sleeping, she learns that her life, that she matters less. And when black kids in Atlanta, Georgia, learn that Ray Chad Brooks was murdered yet again by a white police officer when he failed a breathalyzer test while walking home, those kids learn that Brooks's life mattered less. And when the officer is actually charged with homicide, and the next day the entire Atlanta police force fails to show up for work in protest, those kids realize that no one on the entire Atlanta police force has their backs, and they know for sure that black lives, that their lives matter less. Ahmaud Arbery, Philando Castile, Sandra Bland, Jordan Edwards, Kalief Browder, Elijah McClain, Freddie Gray, for every name, there are hundreds more who've died at the hands of police officers. For every death, there's a black child that sees that those lives mattered less, and that same black child learns that they matter less. Humans, all of us, need to know that we matter to someone, that people are looking out for us, that someone has our back, and students at Rogers High School deserve the same, to know that they matter to their peers, to their teachers and administrators, and to their community, all of them. The logo on the gym floor at Rogers lets our black students know that despite what they see around them in the country, here in Newport, their lives matter too, to all of us, that we stand with them and for them, and that we have their backs in a world that too often doesn't. It's not political correctness, it's kindness and basic human decency, which Mr. Mucci seems to completely lack. And to paraphrase the words of school committee member Stephanie Winslow, anytime someone asks me about the Black Lives Matter logo, my response is to say that if you're uncomfortable or resentful, you should recognize your negative reaction as a call to personal action. Educate yourself, listen, read, Google. The story is long, often inspiring, and too often brutal, and it deserves your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nash, do we have-
We do. Angela McCalla.
All right. Angela, I can say Angela. If you could state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Can you raise your hand, please?
Raise your hand when you're on the phone. I think she might have-
Ms. McCalla?
Hi.
Oh, there she is.
Sorry, I was following the prompt. I want to thank you. Thanks for your patience. My name is Angela McCalla. I live at 203 Hillside Avenue. And I am here tonight as a mother of a Rogers High School alumni who is currently attending the most prestigious HCCU, which is currently Howard University. And I want to say to all the folks and all the members tonight that I wish that my son was able to see something like that going through the school. I think that we should be applauding our children for being brave and utilizing their voice to help others. And I, yeah, that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nash, do we have another, somebody else for public comment?
I'm bringing Nicole Matthews into the panel.
Ms. Matthews, if you could state your name and address when you get here, and you'll have three minutes for your comments.
Yes, my name is Nicole Matthews. I live at 90 Gerard Ave in Newport, and I just want to say that I personally, as a parent of a student within the Newport Public School System, and also a parent of an alumni from Rogers High School, I'm proud of the students at Rogers. I'm proud of their work to highlight the prejudice and discrimination that is experienced by black students there and the other schools within the Newport Public School System, prejudice and discrimination experienced by their families and visitors to their schools. I think it's a complete injustice to say that systemic racism is mythical, and to make that statement is evidence of the white privilege that many Newporters enjoy and the blind eye that's being turned to the already existent racial tensions that are within our city. And I just want to share very briefly, because I think that this is important, that Black Lives Matter was created in 2013 in response to the acquittal of Trayvon Martin, murderer. The mission of Black Lives Matter is to eradicate white supremacy and build local power to intervene in violence inflicted on black communities by the state and by vigilantes. That is a quote from their website, if people care to actually look up what they are about. And again, I will state that I am proud personally of the students for making their feelings known, for welcoming students of color, black students in particular, making it known that there is a space for them within the school system. Thank you.
Ms. Nash, do we have some other folks still?
I'm sorry, we have Chris Gross.
All right.
Mr. Gross, you are on the panel?
Mr. Gross, if you could just state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes for your comments. Thank you.
Certainly. So, my name is Chris Gross, and I live at 43 Holland Street here in Newport. I'm an educator who has had the opportunity to work directly with Newport students and families for the last eight years. The most important thing I've learned during this time is that racism is alive and well, not just in Newport, but across the country. Anytime marginalized communities name racism and/or oppression, there is often a backlash, retaliation, and various forms of violence. It's an attempt to silence and deflect from the real issue of the racism that's embedded in our culture and across our institutions. It's also important to acknowledge that we live in a society where it's more taboo to call out racism than it is to actually say something racist, as evidenced by Dan Mucci tonight and repeatedly. Even just downloading Nextdoor, typing Dan Mucci into the search box, you will have plenty to read of what his actual views are, okay? And it's unfair to our black and brown community members who are constantly under attack to continue to be subjected to this, whether it's opening up a local newspaper, logging onto social media, watching the news, or attending a school committee meeting. This is not an example of public discourse or free speech. It's hate, it's racism, and we shouldn't have, we have a collective responsibility to not give platform. Also, and when we need to name it, we need to use our voice. And I also want to say, speaking of using your voice, I just want to address how Robert Leary chose to use his voice and platform during February's school committee meeting. For him to stay silent and not offer any support or feedback to the students who are leaders in the newly formed Diversity and Relevance Committee, who had the courage to speak on their experiences as students of color inside Rogers High School spoke volumes, not a good job, not even a thank you. Instead, Mr. Leary chose to end their presentation by peppering a black student who played an integral role in putting Black Lives Matter on the home court with questions such as, who gave you permission to put that on the floor? And what happens if people show up to you next week and want to put a veterans' logo on the floor? Truly shameful. Even worse, witnessing these young people need to defend themselves, eyebrows raised, jaws dropped, voices quivering, was embarrassing. It was wrong. And if you, and Robert Leary did not stop there. He went on to play victim and accuse other school committee members of painting him with a broad brush and labeling him unfairly. Mr. Leary, you seem to have no trouble showing your true colors all by yourself. Newport is listening, and we remain hopeful for meaningful change because all this really does is reinforce the urgency for anti-racism work. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Ms. Nash, do we have?
We have Nico Merritt.
All right, Ms.-
Go. There you are.
Okay, Ms. Merritt, if you could state your name and address for the record, please, and you'll have three minutes for your comments.
Sure. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
So, my name is Nico Merritt, and I live on Lead Yard Street in Newport. And I just want to say, I had something prepared to say, but Mr. Mucci's statements have completely thrown me off, so I'm gonna add something different. I want to preface this by saying I've never ever once met a racist person who actually says that they are racist. So, when a person says they are not racist as a part of their comment, we need to take that into consideration. So, there's a definition by Stephen O. Roberts, who is a Stanford psychologist. People often define racism as disliking or mistreating others on the basis of race. That definition is wrong. Racism is a system of advantage based on race. It is hierarchy. It is a pandemic. Racism is so deeply embedded within US minds and society that it's virtually impossible to escape. Citizens of racist societies reinforce racism, whether they identify as racist or not, and whether they want to or not. Simply put, the US systematically constructs racial categories, places people inside of those categories, and segregates people on the basis of those categories. So, Mr. Mucci, I think that you are incorrect in saying that you're not a racist. You have benefited from this, and you're showing racist tendencies by completely twisting the whole background of Black Lives Matters and what it means. So, I hope that you do your due diligence and actually research why it was created, and let these students have their voice within a school system that they feel that they're not represented in. I'm very proud of the students, and I stand by their decal on the gym floor, and I hope that more adults stand up and support these students to make sure that they feel valued and seen. We shouldn't be putting them in front of adults alone to deal with the negativity that they're having to endure for taking a stand. If more adults behaved like this youth, we would have more things happening here. But it seems like adults are remaining silent and letting these students stand up on their own. So, I would love to see more support of the students, and I want to thank all the people that have spoken before me and gave voice to power for these young people. I think we need to stand behind them and not allow people to misinform and blatantly lie to the community like Mr. Mucci has. Like, he said it was taxpayer dollars paying for this decal and all sorts of misinformation. So, if you're gonna make your voice seen, you should do your homework before you do that. So, I stand by my statement, and I thank you all for my time.
Thank you. Mrs. Nash, do we have-
Mrs. Neary?
Mrs. Neary.
Mrs. Neary. Mrs. Neary.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. If you could state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes for your comments.
Great. Uh, my name is Ada Neary, and I live at 36 Newport Avenue. And I have two children in Newport Public Schools, one in elementary school and one at Thompson Medical School. Um, I want to start by saying that Black history is American history. And the first 12, the first 20 enslaved Africans arrived in Virginia in 1619. 1619 is a fact. It is not a myth. It is a fact. Let me repeat. The first 20 enslaved Africans arrived in Virginia, in the colony of Virginia, in 1619. Systematic racism is years of Jim Crow laws, redlining, different mortgage rates for Black and Brown folks, different health outcomes for Black and Brown folks. We see that now with the pandemic, and one Black president does not erase all of that. South Virginia University, where I work, is a Catholic institution. It is a Sister of Mercy institution, and it has a Black Lives Manor banner in front of its chapel. South Virginia University, the Sisters of Mercy are not Marxists. I am proud of the students. I am incredibly proud of the students. I am proud of the teachers who have helped them do this. I am proud of the administration who have supported them. I am proud. Keep the logo on the gym floor. Teach the fullness of American history. Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go back to Mrs. Munter.
All right. Ms. Munter, are you with us?
I'm here.
Oh, great. Yes, I can hear you. And if you come in, as you know, please introduce, uh, please.
I made it home, so. My name is Kendra Munter. I live at 22 Homer Street, and I have a daughter at Thompson. My, so my original comment before, before I heard the first comment was I was coming tonight to thank all the administrators and the teachers and the staff, now that we're halfway through this pandemic year on the amazing job they're doing on holding this crazy school year together. But now I'm going to pivot, since we've had some comments. Um, I still want to thank the administrators, the teachers, and staff, but I really want to thank them for supporting the students at Rogers and helping them put this logo that is so important down on the gym floor. I really want to thank, uh, Mr. Vance and, uh, Mr. Monahan for all the support they gave the students when the blowback started coming from Facebook and other social media. They really stepped up and had their students' backs, and it was really nice to see. Um, I think, you know, inclusion is important. And we know that when kids see, seen feel, when kids feel seen and feel that they are important, we know that they will thrive in school. We know that they will do their best. We know that they'll want to come to school. We should be doing everything possible to make our schools welcome and warm and feel home for all of our students. That includes all of our Black and Brown students. We should not, not leave anyone out. I fully support the Black Lives Matter logo. I am 100% down if we want to put it at every school. And I think we should look at all of our schools and see how we are making all of our children feel warm and welcome and want to come to our school and make sure that they feel that they are valued and make sure that they know they are important, because all of our students are important, but especially our Brown and Black and most vulnerable students are important. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Nash, uh, do we have more folks signed up?
We do not have anyone else signed up for public comment.
All right, so just, I, I will close public comment just to let the public and folks listening know. We appreciate your comments this evening. However, as it says in the public comment and is part of the policy, public comment is meant for you all to come to our meeting, express your opinions, your thoughts, uh, on issues that you're welcome to bring. However, we can't respond because it would violate the open meeting laws that these items weren't posted. So I just want to let you know, speaking on behalf of my committee members, I'm sure that some of them would love to comment.
Ellen.
Give you feedback, but, um, then not a lot, you know, it would violate public, uh, the open meeting law. So thank you for your comments. Be assured that we heard them, and we'll take them under consideration as we move forward. So thank you all for, um, your comments this evening. Uh, with that said, we're going to move along to the next action item or to, that brings us into action items. Uh, the first action item is 5.1. Uh, this is a arts, uh, education resolution. It was sponsored by Dr. Flowers and Ms. Winslow. It's a rec, it's a, uh, resolution in celebration of the arts in Newport and recognition of the Youth Art Month, uh, during March. Dr. Flowers and Ms. Winslow introduced the Arts, uh, Education Resolution for consideration this evening. And I'm going to ask Dr. Flowers if she, uh, well, first I would ask for a motion to accept and get a second, and then we would, um, have the resolution read. So I see Ms. Boatright is going to make the motion, and the second by Ms. Winslow. Uh, so I'm going to ask Dr. Flowers if she'd read the resolution for us at this time, and then we can have further comment and, uh, discussion.
Thank you very much. Uh, the Newport School Committee Resolution of 2021, March 9th, the Arts Are Education Resolution. Whereas all students have the right to an arts education that includes dance, media arts, music, theater, and visual arts taught by certified arts educators in partnership with community providers. And whereas arts education has the power to change students' lives, and whereas arts education is a key to reigniting students' enthusiasm for learning in a post-COVID-19 world through integration of the arts components into the various disciplines in the K through 12 curricula. And whereas arts education helps nurture healthy, inclusive communities where all points of view are respected. And whereas arts education experiences help students understand their own cultural roots and appreciate others' cultural roots and traditions. And whereas arts education supports the social and emotional well-being of students and fosters a more positive, safer school environment. And whereas Newport Public Schools' arts educators have shown their talent, dedication, and devotion to the arts achievement of their students, and the students have grown in their talent and love for the arts. And whereas arts education is part of the well-rounded education for every student as outlined in the Every Student Succeeds Act and in Rhode Island State law. And therefore, be it resolved that Newport Public Schools pledges to maintain and grow our arts education programs in the 2021, 22 school year and beyond. Where to, the following bear witness, it would be Raymond Gomes, the chairperson, on behalf of the school committee, and Colleen Burns Germaine, on behalf of the Newport Public Schools. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. I'm going to, uh, Ms. Winslow, I'm sure you'd, before we step off comment, is the co-sponsor of this evening. If you'd like to say a few words, you and Dr. Flowers, and then we'll, uh, ask for other comment or discussion.
Sure. Um, I was definitely the, the band geek at, during my time at Newport Public Schools. So I mean, it was my nickname, so I'm proud to say it. Um, I was one of those kids who, uh, definitely found all of my solace in music. And, and I, believe me, I remember back to about a year ago when we were deciding where we would put the pre-K. And would it be at JFK, or were we going to continue to use the music in art rooms at Pell like we had for years and years? And it was heartbreaking to hear that, yeah, we were going to take the music in art rooms. But deep down, I said, you know, I know that artists were used to that. We were always used to kind of being relegated to the side and forgotten about. And we'll get through it. Um, during COVID, I know it was, you know, one of the first things to just be ignored. But I'll never forget, in the fourth grade, one of my music teachers telling me, "You're a shining star, Stephanie." That has stuck with me forever. Music teachers, art teachers, they make a huge difference. And I'm really glad to see the Rhode Island Department of Education bring back music and chorus into the schools right now during COVID. And I don't ever want Newport Public Schools to forget about how important the arts are for kids' well-being and, and well-rounded futures. So I'm really glad that Mrs. Sheen brought this resolution, um, to our attention. I was very excited to sponsor it. Thank you.
I think, Dr. Flowers, go right ahead.
Yeah, well, first of all, thank you for giving me the privilege of reading the resolution. And some of the best memories I had as a student in the public school elementary grades were always the art classes and also the privilege of working with so many of the wonderful arts teachers during my career. And every year, just as an example, if people have never noticed, when they have the art show around Christmas time and the, uh, the pieces that the young people have produced from all, from all grades are on display in the Newport Post office, and you see people, you know, looking up. And I always get the pictures, and, and Mrs. Sheen posts them, uh, on, on the social media, that there's just so much going on. And, and when I was reading this, I was saying, I was emphasizing that we're all, and this that every single student will find some part of any one of these arts, uh, key to the, uh, you never know where these youngsters are going to wind up, key to some kind of success in their lives. So, uh, I, I was pushing for keeping the arts in the, in the public school curriculum long before I even ran for office. And this has been a few years now. So, um, I certainly, uh, hope that we keep moving ahead and improving and congratulate the teachers who put so much heart and soul into the arts programs.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments or dialogue from the, Mr. Drang, go right ahead.
Yes, this is to, uh, Dr. Germaine. I mean, is there any sort of a push to eliminate arts or reduce arts in the school system right now? Um, I mean, I wholeheartedly support this resolution. I think it's a great thing, and my kids love art. I can, I can go back to what Dr. Flowers said. One of my best memories is being a kid and taking art in elementary school, and I would hate to see it go away or get, uh, you know, reduced or limited. So is there any kind of a push to, to reduce the arts in the school system?
No, not at this time. We did, uh, Mr. Drang, a few years back, we did have to cut back at Thompson. But we have, um, been slowly but surely bringing it back, and we are trying to increase the arts. As a matter of fact, we expanded a CTE, uh, program up at the high school, so in the fine arts. So we, we do realize the importance of arts and, uh, music, the whole nine yards. Kids do thrive in it. So we'll keep our fingers crossed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? I will echo Ms. Winslow's comments and, uh, very glad that we did get that bond passed, because, uh, getting those classrooms added on to Pell will certainly free up those art and music rooms for, as they were intended to be used, and unfortunately have not been. So, uh, seeing no other discussions. Oh, go, go right ahead, Ms. Bowlin.
I, I just wanted to, um, congratulate to the head of our arts department, because she, um, finds every single contest, art contest, you know, and enters our kids, and they do really well, and it's very exciting for them to do this. Even in COVID, she's put our kids, you know, and gotten them involved in these things. So, um, you know, it takes a really good director to, uh, you know, to be able to lead these kind of things. So thank you.
And I'm sorry, and when you see director, Sheen, that's all you want to do, a smile, laugh. She makes your day, no matter if you see her in person or on the screen. So, yes, we're very fortunate to have.
She sort of, as that old saying goes about Buddy Sian, she would go to the opening of a letter, I think it was. She'll go to the opening of any art show with the kids, and she certainly does get their work recognized anywhere that she can. So Diane, Ms. Sheen does a great job. So, any other comments or discussion? Uh, seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution, I'm sorry, I'll have, uh, Ms. Nash do a roll call vote.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Aye.
Mrs. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Drang?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero?
All righty. Uh, thank you. That brings us up to our next, uh, action item. It's 5.2, and it is request, uh, for approval of the contract between Newport Public Schools and Downs Construction Company. Uh, this is for their OPM services that they were appointed to, uh, maybe a month, maybe two months ago now. It's all starting to become a blur. But, uh, they were, uh, the company selected to be our OPM. Uh, and this is a contract that has been worked on, uh, through, uh, our attorney and their company. So it's before you this evening. Is there a motion to approve the contract as presented? Ms. Boatright, seconded by, uh, Mr. Bowlin. Uh, I'm, I'm not quite sure. It's a standard contract. I don't know if there's any questions or if anybody wanted to, had any questions or discussion? Uh, go right ahead, Ms. Bowlin.
I would, I'd just like to add that, um, you know, we're in constant contact with Downs. And, and, um, so far, we're headed in a really great direction. We're staying on schedule. They've worked very hard to help us set that schedule up with, um, our superintendent. And, um, I'm, I believe that this is going to be a great marriage here. And I'm very excited for the future of our two big projects here in Newport.
Ms. Bowlin, go right ahead.
Well, she just finished, but I'll speak. I did want to say the same, same, similar, but I wanted to first thank Neil for his hard work. Thank you very much, Mr. Galvin. And then just wanted to, again, say to the Downs, um, both, uh, Joe DiSanti and Kyle Latini, that they have been working very hard getting all of these new vendors on board and starting up fast-tracking two projects at the same time while we're still hiring folks. It's been a lot of balls in the air, but, um, it's going to be very successful. They have a lot of knowledge that they bring to the table. And, um, so we really look forward to successful fat, two fast-tracked projects with high quality that are lasting 50 years plus. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Boatright. Thank you very much. Mr. Leary, go right ahead.
But, uh, so let me explain the details of the contract for the public and the press, like the price and things like that.
Uh, it's a lengthy contract. I, I, uh, I could speak to it from reading it. I'm not sure. Is there anybody that's, uh, Mr. Galvin, go right ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I can just briefly describe it. It's a, uh, not-to-exceed contract. The price is the same as the bid that was submitted by Downs when they were selected. And the not-to-exceed price is $1,178,770. Uh, it's based on the hourly rates that, uh, they submitted along with their bid. Theoretically, it could be less than that, but it's certainly not to exceed unless, for whatever reason, you, as the school committee, wanted something additional that was not, uh, part of the, uh, original contract. So that is the highlight of the cost and the basis for the, uh, compensation that they would receive. And certainly, I can attempt to answer any other questions anyone else might have.
Yes, Mr. Galvin, do you, um, is this for both schools or just for Pell?
No, this is for both.
Okay. Just want to make sure the public knows what's going on, because they get blindsided and they just see things like that coming up.
Any other questions for, uh, Mr. Galvin or Ms. Boatright or Ms. Bowlin? Uh, not seeing any. Ms. Nash, if you could do a vote to, uh, approve the contract as presented this evening.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Sorry about that. Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Flowers? Mr. Leary? Ms. Winslow? Thank you. Six one?
Thank you. And congratulations again and thanks, Joe. I know Joe and Kyle are on, on board tonight for later in the, I do want to thank you. I, I do know the past couple of weeks, you guys have worked very closely in with Mr. Galvin and did take into consideration many things as far as the overall cost. And I do thank you for keeping the cost and the financial obligations to the city in mind and accepting the term. So thank you and we'll hear from you guys a little bit later. So thank you. The next item is 5.3, the request for approval of TMS window repair. Mr. Young is here. He requests, or Mr. Young has requested approval for a contract with Soul Source Construction LLC for window repair services at Thompson Middle School. Funding that is identified in the current year, the contract is before us. For consideration is there a motion to approve the contract as presented? Dr. Flowers and Ms. Winslow with the second. And I'm going to, hopefully Mr. Young has finished his dinner and he can give us, give us an update or a little overview on that.
Yeah, so just an overview, I think we all know that Thompson windows have been an issue for a while. So we sought some folks to come out, take a look. This company came out, gave us a very detailed look at the windows. What we found, it's actually the, it's the mechanisms inside the windows, kind of the mechanics that have to be replaced. And this is going to allow us to open and close the windows. I don't know if anybody's tried to open these windows on your own, but you know, it's like doing, it's literally like a deadlift. You got to jump up, jump up there, squat down. And, you know, we're a back injury away from, from, you know, from actually probably paying more than these windows. So it's desperately needed, especially with COVID. You know, we have to open the windows, you know, to get the airflow and stuff going on in there. So this is something that we desperately need. The company's going to work on off hours, so they won't be in there when our students are there. They'll come in after school or, you know, or on break. So it won't be any interference with what's going on during the school.
I'm sure there'll be a couple, I see a few hands up. I'm going to go to Ms. Bowlin and then to Mr. Dring.
Okay, so first of all, my first question is, one contracts for $24,000 and ones for 34. There were two separate contracts, correct?
Two bidders.
Oh, two bidders, okay. So it wasn't, okay, so we went with the lower of the two bidders. Okay, second question is, so lessons learned, is there any lesson we can take away from this with the new school? And I mean, these are windows that lift up, correct?
Yes.
Which has been, it's good in COVID era to have those windows, correct or not?
Yeah, yes.
And I said, now they're going to be able to be opened further or, you know?
Just open easier. I mean, it takes the guys like an hour, a day to go in there, open the windows, put the fans in and, and do things. And, and, you know, when you have the window and then you have the, the shelf next to the window, it's even harder to reach, you can't just reach over with your hands and roll it up. It's, it's, so I've already got that. And, you know, when it comes to the new buildings, like we've got to make sure we get that right.
Okay, good. I've just, make sure we take the lessons. All right.
Mr. Dring, you are next.
Yeah, Mr. Young, how many windows? Is this all the windows or is this just?
180, 186, 181.
Wow.
So all the windows kind of went at the same time?
To be honest with you, I don't think it was the right stuff put in there the first time.
188 windows, yeah, that's it all. Wow.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, well, let's make sure we get that right in the new schools.
We will.
I see Joe's notepad going as we're talking. Ms. Winslow, go right ahead.
Laughing at Ronnie Gunsalves. He's putting in the chat, 188 windows, no, 1,818, no, 181. So it's 181 windows. Yeah. And so if we award the contract tonight, when could it be fixed?
He's standing by, wait, he's waiting for my call. I told him it was going before the board tonight and I'll, I'll call him right after because he's ready to go.
All right, thank you. And how long would it take? Did they, I don't remember if that, like an approximate time?
I mean, it depends on how many hours they can get in per day. So like they may start at two and work till, you know, five in the morning or they may, you know, rotate it based on just being able to get out of the building when the students are there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. And any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leary?
So for the press, could Mr. Young tell us the pot of money, where it come from? And how much is taken out of it and what's left in it?
I'm not, I'm sure it's out of a maintenance, I'll defer to Mr. Young. But Mr. Maybe, Mr. Gunsalves could tell the exact, he is with us as well and he might be able to tell you the exact pot that it's coming out of. But I'm sure it's out of a building maintenance fund.
That's correct.
Mr. Gunsalves, do you have a more exact location? Okay.
Well, did he tell how much money's in the fund?
Well, we're working on it, Mr. Leary. You can't see, I see Mr. Gunsalves feverishly typing away at home. So he's, he'll come up with it.
These are coming out of the general fund, maintenance funds, Mr. Leary.
How much is in that fund?
Well, it's not, the maintenance fund isn't maintained with maintenance funds only. It's the entire general fund. So if you look to our financial analysis, which will come up a little bit later on, we can, we can sort through any of the budget questions you have about maintenance.
Can I get a whole detailed list of that, what's in that fund and what's been spent on so far?
I, I, I think you are asking about our capital improvement fund? Not, okay, okay. So that is not what's being used to, to cover the cost of, of the upgraded mechanisms in the windows at Thompson.
So I don't respect anything right now, but if you could get to me or anybody else you like in the committee, the general maintenance fund and the capital improvement fund, how much money it started with, what's been, what's been taken out of it, what's been spent on, a detailed listing for each one, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, no problem.
All righty, thank you. Ms. Winslow, go right ahead.
Sorry, I have another question about the timing it will take. I just, do you have an estimate of hours? And if you don't, can we get after their first day, like how long they do estimate it to take? So that we all, it's done, you know, especially soon by the time the weather's nice enough or the payments due?
Yeah, I'll get that to you. I'll get a closer number for you, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, any other questions or concerns from the school committee? Comments? I don't see any. So Ms. Nash, if you could do a vote to approve the contract as presented.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero?
Very good. Thank you all for your time and comments. 5.4 is the next up. This is a request to temporarily, excuse me, temporarily suspend the policy number 7100, naming new facilities. This is necessary due to the action that we took last month where we asked Mr. Bob Powers to take up and head the technology fund for the new Rogers. And this is their ability to be able to sell, for lack of the right word, the naming rights to various areas of the school as they do the fundraising. So is there a motion to approve suspension of the policy this evening as presented? I see Dr. Flowers with the motion, Ms. Bowlin with the second. Are there any questions or comments? This follows the action. This is very similar to when the Pell Technology Fund Endowment was established and giving them the rights to the various portions of Pell School and Thompson before that. So very common procedure after the technology endowment is set up. Any questions? Mr. Galvin?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman, you, you just simply may want to reserve your right to consider any major facility. I'm not so sure you're necessarily conceding all naming rights, the entire facility itself. You may want to continue to have that ability to make those decisions. So it's somewhat fluid and you're, I'm assuming you're following the prior fundraising efforts in the past. I don't think they got to those high level of facility naming aspects. So it's with that in mind, I think that you're giving them the flexibility to continue what they did in the past.
And I would agree and with your intention, is there perhaps a way that you would like me to award that as we go ahead and present this motion? Is there a kind of a title for the?
Yeah, I, I would just say, you know, suspend the policy subject to the continuing rights of the school committee to oversee the naming of the facilities. So you're kind of preserving it, but giving them the flexibility to proceed.
Understood. So just trying to do this the right way. We've had a motion, it was really a motion to accept and suspend the minutes, to suspend the policy for the naming of the new facilities. So there would, what I, the easiest way to probably do it is to have the motion withdrawn by Ms. Flowers, who made the motion. And I will restate the motion. So Dr. Flowers, would you withdraw the original motion or your approval of the original motion?
Certainly.
So what I will do is I'll make the, the motion for this evening would be to approve the suspension of the naming rights for new facilities for the Rogers High School's capital campaign with the school committee reserving them any major, what would be considered a major naming rate or a larger naming portion of the school. So is there a motion of Mr. Dring with a second by Dr. Flowers? We've discussed it. I don't think there's any discussion, just correcting the motion. All those in favor signify, sorry, Ms. Nash. One of these days we'll be off the Zoom and back to normal. But Ms. Nash, if you could do a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Bowlin?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero?
Thank you all and I'll relay that to Mr. Powers in the morning. That is it on action items. It brings us into the discussion items for this evening. First discussion item is a school building committee update. And I will, I believe they're going to pass the baton as quick as I pass it, but I'll pass the baton to Ms. Boatright and they can do with it what they wish. One of them?
Thank you, you want to go? All right, yes. So this week was, especially the last 10 days, very busy. We had more, we had 11 firms that applied to be our architect for Rogers High School. And the committee, the working group from the building committee members spent many, many hours going through these proposals. And they went through the proposals and out of the 11, they came up with three that we wanted to interview. They had the three highest scoring points. And so we invited three, three firms to interview. And of those three, the evening that we had the interviews, the top firm was selected, which is now, the name of the firm is SLAM, SLAM, they go by. And very excited, they have a lot of work. If you go online, you can see examples of the buildings that they have built. And, and so that's, that will be coming in front of the school committee on Thursday for an approval. But they're being recommended by the, the working group and the entire school building committee. But that comes Thursday at 5:00. And then the next thing we're waiting for is the proposals from the construction company. And those come in, when, Luisa, is that?
They come in this Wednesday, tomorrow.
Tomorrow. And so that group will once again be working to go through them all. The last ones, there were over 2,000 pages we went through for the last. But so it's a huge commitment and people take it very seriously. A lot of really good discussions happen. And so the construction company will be coming up next. And we'll be, it'll be, I think we will have how many days? About like 10 days with those to be able to look them over and come back again. So you want to add anything, Luisa?
Yeah, well, just that also we've kicked off the fast-track project at Pell. And so the Downs team has been having some meetings and we're going to start getting more people involved with some of those things too going forward at Pell. And soon, once we get the design team on, in particular, we'll start having some community visioning meetings and things will start really happening after that. But getting the teams on board has been a very, very, very time-consuming effort by the people on the working committee. So I hope people really thank them, every single one of them for their time and effort and thought. So.
Right, you know, a lot of thought this week. There's even a meeting that's going to be held to determine some of the, the environmental considerations for Pell. And we have people from our city that'll be representing us. And our Senator Don Oyer is hosting this meeting and a lot of good's going to come out of it, I think. So very exciting. Any questions? Stephanie?
Mr. Dring, go right ahead. Ms. Dring then, yeah.
Yeah, either, either, you know, Ms. Boatright or Ms. Bowlin, just, are you going to have any meetings for the neighbors? Because I'm getting neighbors starting to ask, you know, what's going on? And I know a lot of people at the bottom of Dudley and Dexter and even on Hillside. You know, this is going to be pretty close to it. So are you guys planning on a meeting or do you know of when they're going to do that?
Oh, you want me to answer that? I mean, the Downs, Downs, between Joe and Kyle have been putting together a schedule that they were, they're going to get to us, I think, tomorrow in our, in our little co-chair with Colleen meeting. So we'll, it's going to be the first time we see sort of the layout of the next couple of months of meetings. But that is going to be one of the things on it. So the neighborhood at Pell, that will definitely be happening. And then at Rogers, but also more, more sort of visioning on sort of the whole Rogers, because that's a whole new build, you know? But at Pell, it will be mostly with the neighbors, I think, for sure. You will be hearing about it soon.
Thank you.
Was I muted? I'm sorry, Ms. Winslow, go right ahead.
Um, real quick, Ms. Bowlin?
I just give me, I'm trying to get off one meeting.
Thought the aliens were coming for her. It was like a sci-fi movie.
Feedback.
Expecting Godzilla to burst in behind her. I think she's got to come back out and come back in. If you.
Can I respond a little bit more?
If you want to buy a little time, go right ahead.
Sure. So just to add to Ms. Boatright's response on the neighborhood meetings, one of the things that we are doing right now is with the design bill team of Behan and Studio Jade is coming up with some options on parking, bus drop-off, parent drop-off, as well as looking at the groundwater. So we want to get some facts together and some, some information together before we set those meetings up. But I could, I can envision within the next two weeks, they will start setting those meetings up at that point. Because we do have quite a bit of information. We have a couple of options. because we do have quite a bit of information, we have a couple of options now out there as far as parking, we just need a little bit more investigation to be done before we want to present those and make sure they're fully vetted out.
And I just wanted to clarify that, you're talking in, in the reference to meeting with the neighbors of the Pell School.
Correct.
Great. Miss, go ahead, Ms. Boat.
Before Becky comes back on board, are there other things that you guys want to share with the larger committee? We should have asked you if there are some things that you want to go beyond with that. Joe or Kyle?
Kyle, I know that some of your thunder was stolen by Mrs. Bowlen and Mrs. Boatright, but do you have any other information?
I really don't have anything to add. They covered the update for Rogers High School with the design team recommendation and the construction manager responses coming in tomorrow, and for Pell, Joe, you just covered it with the traffic options and stormwater, the stuff we're digging into right now. I guess one thing I could add is we're also starting to look at the programming of the spaces of the Pell addition with the administration at the school and make sure we have that vision clear as well. But everything else was covered pretty well already.
Ms. Winslow, you want to go ahead with your, you had a question, I think, or?
Yeah, I, for Ms. Boatright or, or Ms. Bowlen, I actually don't remember what it was called now, an environmental assessment or something at Pell with Senator Oyer, could you tell me? I know there was?
This is actually, Louise is the one that really started setting it up, so Louise, would you like to speak to it?
Yeah, I had reached out to her because she, Don Oyer, Senator Oyer is chairing the environmental group of the Senate, so I had just reached out and said, we'd love to talk to her about some of the ideas we had in our RFPs that we wanted to do anything and everything that was green, including solar parking lots, and so we want to explore all options. Both Joe and Kyle have already had a meeting with National Grid to talk about that, and this is just to start of have, open that conversation with her, because we haven't even had a chance to talk, so it's just a very preliminary meeting, but we did ask two people who are on the Newport Environmental Commission to participate. Again, it's mostly just a very introductory thing to get going, and then there will be many more conversations after that, because that's what it's about.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alrighty. Any other questions or comments for anybody at this moment? Alrighty, Kyle, Joe, thank you for being with us tonight, and Ms. Bowlen and Ms. Boatright for your work, so thank you all. We'll move on at this point. The next discussion item is 6.2, it's Chartwell's food service contract, and the, Mr. Gonzalez is here this evening to discuss, discussed, discuss the district's food service contract with Chartwells, and the current contract is nearing its completion, so I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Gonzalez, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Gomes. Today's update is, is really just an update, and FYI of where we stand with our food service nearing completion of a five-year contract. I've laid out a few options we have available to us. USDA has come out with extended waivers just today for a lot of the lunch programs that we're running. Allows some flexibility in the program and how we divvy up the meals. We've been utilizing Chartwells for the last five years. They've, in my mind, done a great job. They've helped us kind of build the airplane as we've been coasting along this pandemic. The three outlined items I have, we can do, the options we have, we can apply for the USDA waiver to extend our contract for one more year. We can piggyback the state aid award, excuse me, not the state aid award, the statewide food service contract. I spoke with the food and nutrition team at Ride this afternoon, and I anticipate in the next week, some information is going to be shared by the nutrition team at Ride, and our last or other option would be to repost or rebid for food service contracts, so I'm just making everyone aware of things that might be coming up in the next few months. Yes, please.
Bowlen, Ms. Bowlen, go right ahead.
Yes, we had a detailed conversation today with the finance committee about this, so just to be really clear, it's only a three-year contract that we ever go into, and oftentimes they'll have a one- or two-year extension. So, we actually use the two, the one-year option, one-year option, so it made it a five-year contract that we had with Chartwells. So what we're recommending is, there's no reason to jump today on any, anything unless we were going out for a brand-new contract right now, because they're very, very time-consuming. What has to go into the RFP is, is just unbelievable paperwork. So, it seems to us to make the best sense to, right now, wait and see what happens with the statewide contract or take a one-year extension due to everything that's going on with COVID right now. So that would be our recommend, you know, the finance committee, I think that, you know, we came to that kind of conclusion today that just sitting on it right now is probably the best thing to do for another, you know, few weeks until we find out if there's a statewide contract awarded, or if we go out for another year.
I just, thank you, I have a couple of questions based on your statement. The contract, I'm assuming expires on June 30th of this year? And the, what, what's the detail, what is the information on, what does the statewide food service contract mean, for instance?
So if, my understanding is if Chartwells were to win that contract, there, we would not have to go back, or, or another company would win the contract, that we could take advantage of the pricing, it's kind of like a master price agreement. So that would be, you know, the advantage of doing that, but we also, you know, Newport in the past has put a lot into our contract that's extra, things that we wanted for our district, but, you know, right now, we don't need to really, you know, deal with that right now, so, which is a good thing. We got these two options for us, which puts us in a better position, because I can't imagine going out for another RFP right now. It would really, you know.
So is the, yeah, so, so is it, is the food, the statewide food service contract, is that a year-to-year contract? Or is that like the Chartwells that it's awarded for a three-year period? How long is the period of?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. Ronnie, do you?
That's a very good question, Mr. Gomes. I don't know the answer off the top of my head. I don't know, I can't assume that it's very much like our process, because they have to post an RFP for all of the vendors and vet them and score them, so it's likely that they had multiple years included, but as soon as I have the information shared with Ride, I will provide an update to this.
Yeah, we can, for next meeting, we'll be able to, you know, provide a, an update, we'll have looked into it, and then we can even maybe make a recommendation or give some options.
Thank you, I don't, go ahead, Ms. Winslow, then Dr. Flowers.
Okay, thank you.
By the way, it's three years. I just heard from Cindy King. It's a three-year contract.
Okay, um, so when, when, my question, I guess, is, is this something that, you know, I know we haven't had our subcommittees really meeting since COVID, but, I mean, I don't want the burden to fall on the finance subcommittee to review this contract, or does this, will the school committee review it? Like, I'm talking that's the state contract, and then do, make this decision, but, so is this something that we would want to get our health and wellness committee back together to decide, or even some of the people who, you know, members of the public who used to be part of that, if they're willing to help? I don't know, just to go through, I'm imagining it's a pretty big contract, I've never seen them, but to help out.
Yeah, the last two times, so I've been on for 10 years, and the last two contracts that we've done, the health and wellness committee has done the bulk of the work, and along with Marson has really, you know, I should say he has too, 100%, so we will be getting health and wellness meeting going now, like we discussed today, Stephanie, and this will be something I'm sure that they will take up, you know, and make a recommendation.
Ms. Winslow, you all set? Okay, Dr. Flowers.
Yeah, just sort of reiterating what you're saying, and Mrs. Bowlen has been chairing that health and wellness committee for over a decade now, I guess, so I would certainly you know, rely on the expertise of that particular group and the finance subcommittee also. It would seem to me, and I can't speak from any experience as far as the state program, obviously, but it's almost like a cost-benefit look at it, you'd have to look at both of them. To me, it would be much more prudent to stay with what we have now, you know about the, you know what Chartwells is, you know what we're getting from them, and rather than rushing into it, and as you say, the, I think it was on the committee for a short while, the details are horrendous, and stick with what you have now, that would be my take. And I think that would, and again, the expertise of the two committees, but health and wellness is the ones who really take it all apart and, and see what's best for, what's best for the system.
Mr. Galvin, are you nervously rubbing your hands together?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to provide a little bit of comment. Becky is correct, an awful lot of effort has gone in over the years to include certain provisions in the food contract that the health and wellness committee has determined to be most appropriate, and that's taken a lot of effort on their part. The options that are being described, if it falls into the state master purchase agreement, there is a chance that the contracts that they approve might not have the same provisions, so that's a factor to be looked at. If it is a master price agreement process, that essentially allows you to avoid the RFP process, but nevertheless, you as a committee will be looking at it in the same fashion you look at any food contract to determine whether or not you want to proceed and enter into that contract relationship with that particular vendor. The one thing that I'm not certain of, that I'll have to investigate, is whether that first option relating to a COVID extension would permit you as a school committee to extend without going through an RFP process. So I'll have to do some research on that. If that allows you to extend without the RFP process, you might be able to buy another year, but I'm not so certain that it will do that, and then the only avenue left would be the RFP process, which is time-consuming and, you know, a lot of hours and effort by, by the committee, so I've got to do a bit of research for you, but those are the parameters and the options or the possible paths you have to follow.
Thank you. Ms. Boatright, go right ahead.
Yeah, so, Mr. Galvin, so what we were presented, I think Mr. Gonzalez had said that they would allow an extension due to COVID for it. I mean, it would take it into a six-year for us. You're saying that that potentially could be a problem? Well, that's, I think, yeah, you'll have to just talk to Mr. Gonzalez and figure it out, but we?
The intention of the waiver was for districts that are in year five.
Okay.
It, it allows them a one-time waiver, one year only, not to go down the RFP process.
Right, thank you.
Because of time constraints.
I'll have to look at that to grasp that and give you some feedback.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? I don't see any. So, I'm going to move along. With that said, thank you all for your explanation on the food contract. The next, next item up on the discussion item is the TMS principal search. And I'm going to, at this point, it's Dr. Jermaine, and I see HR Director McAndrews, but I don't know who is going to give us an overview, probably Dr. Jermaine, let's start there.
Right, I'm going to say, good evening, everyone, and yes, I am going to hand it over to Ms. McAndrews in a moment. We've been very busy as far as looking at recruitment and looking at posting wide and far for the Thompson Middle School principal position, which is very important, we know, to our school district. We've been reaching out to different colleagues and organizations throughout the state and New England, and I'm going to hand it over to Ms. McAndrews, so she can share how many candidates we have and the process she's gone through so far. The closing is March 15th, which is next Monday, so applications are still coming in, and then we'll follow the process. Go ahead, Ms. McAndrews.
Okay, sorry, okay, sorry, I didn't unclick. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to let you know that we have 31 candidates to date. Everything is being submitted through school spring. And as Dr. Jermaine had said, that we try to be as creative and to kind of cast a net as far as we could, being creative and maybe using some different avenues that, I don't know, have been used before. We did, I did post on Indeed.com and Monster.com, which are some very commonly used websites now for job searches. We also, there is a, a pretty recent committee, Ride, has an educators of color committee. We were able to post through that committee, and locally, the Conexión Latina Newport and Newport Partner for Families. I did reach out to candidates to find out what, how they found out about the position, and the majority of the candidates, of the 31 candidates so far, came through school spring. I had a couple through Indeed, and there were seven that I didn't get a response from as to how they found out about the position.
Do you want to share the universities and other organizations you've shared with?
Sure, I can go through. We kept it in the New England area. We have, from Connecticut, it was Central Connecticut State University. Universe, I don't have these in order of state, I'm sorry, I thought it, so Central Connecticut State University, not, University of Rhode Island, Curry College, which is in Massachusetts, Williams College, which is in New York, Salem State University in Massachusetts, Boston University of Massachusetts, Worcester State University, which is in Massachusetts, Framingham State University in Massachusetts, Suffolk University in Massachusetts, Fairfield University in Connecticut, Bridgewater State University in Massachusetts, Boston College in Massachusetts, South Bay Regina University in Rhode Island, Providence College in Rhode Island, Pittsburgh State University in Massachusetts, Westfield State University in Massachusetts, and Leslie University in Massachusetts, and those were all chosen because they have programs that have some kind of master's or educational leadership program.
Ms. McAndrews, on those universities, so when you, I guess you post to them, you go through them, and then they then send out the resume, I shouldn't say the resume, the search to their graduates of their various programs at those schools? Is that how that would work?
Yes, most of these colleges participate in a program called Handshake, and you go through, it's almost like the Common App with colleges, if you're familiar with that process, where you don't directly apply to the college, you go through this source. It's very commonly used by many colleges. So they take your information, you apply to them, can they post the position, and then they accept or deny. They all did accept, and then they post it on their website through alumni or current students that are looking for positions, and some of them also have resources that they can share information with, a network, depending on which college it is, would determine the qualifications.
Did you want to share the executive searches we've looked into and the price points?
Okay, yep. So, um, yep, it was a, well, we started with NESDEC. I think Dr. Jermaine had reached out to them previously for an executive search service. And they have three different types of searches. The most commonly is a comprehensive search. And that ranges from $12,000 to $20,000. And there are different levels of involvement from them, just from NESDEC, just putting the names, I'm sorry, the position out, and they would search for candidates, kind of similar to what the process we already went through. Up to a full-fledged search, where they walk you through the steps, they involve you with the beginning, how do you poll community members and stakeholders as far as what's, what you're looking for in a position or qualifications in the position, up to the hiring process, even to the selection process. And then
And excuse me for interrupting. In full disclosure, I am chair of that, I am chair of that organization. We do get a 20% discount as well because we are members.
Correct.
And there was Could you just, I'm sorry again to interrupt, could you just give a description so, so people know what it is and why you're the just what, what
Okay, the New England Okay, it stands for, New England Schools of Design Curriculum for the Northeast. It contain, it is seven states throughout New England. Superintendent representatives are elected from each state. And I'm serving as chair right now. I've been on the board for three years and that's where I am. So that's what it is.
I should mention with NESDEC also, even if we don't participate in any kind of a formal search process, they did post the position on their website. It's a service that they offer because we're a participating district. And then there was another group that we reached out to that was recommended. I'm not sure who it was recommended by, but I did look into Alma Advisory Group. And they are pretty extensive in their search that they do. It's a six to nine week timeframe typically, and that's a $35,000 $35,000 cost for that. There are no other options. It's, it's, that's the only program that they offer.
So that agency is usually used especially for if a community is looking for diversity in leadership, et cetera. Providence does use this service for its school system, and also, I believe, the Broad Institute at one point was using them. So we did get that name from, I believe, a community member gave that to us.
And then one other place that I looked into, because my personal experience when I was on school committee, we used when I was in Massachusetts, the Association of School Committees. So I checked into Rhode Island's Association of School Committee, and they don't offer any kind of a service like that. And that's
Thank you. Ms. Winslow, go right ahead. I'm sure there's some questions. So we'll start with Ms. Winslow.
Um, so I was curious, actually, and I think so RIDE gave us the name Alma, the Alma group, right? And I think it was Mr. Leary who called to, to ask them who Providence had used. The, just looking at the colleges and the universities, I was curious, you know, I don't know if somebody's willing to travel far, but you know, all the historically black colleges and universities in the country are south of here or west of here. So I think it would be worth our time to post in those colleges and universities that have master's degrees, like you said, the leadership. I, you can Google it. I, I, I'll send you the website. In fact, I have a couple more websites that I, you know, I, I happened upon, I think there's the National Alliance of Black School Educators, and also the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents, and they, I both saw, you can post a job with them for like $250. So it was a, seemed pretty affordable option. I also, I saw like Davies Career Tech had a job posted on there, a bunch of schools in Massachusetts. So you know, I don't know anything about these organizations, but I know schools in the area are posting there, so that might be worth a shot. I, you know, I, I really just, I guess I can't say it enough, that I, this is a super, super important thing for me. I, I think that the choice of TMS principal is going to show Newport and Newport Public Schools what we're made of. Really, it's like, you know, I, I'm desperate to see adults in our school system who have the same languages and faces and experiences of our students. And it's not easy to, you know, just bring in new people all the time. Everybody's doing hard work and working. And so it's like every time we get one of these opportunities, I really want us to go after it. But yeah, I'll, I'll send an email. I mean, with those names, I think also, you know, I know, Dr. Jermaine, you mentioned March 15th, but my big question is, what if we don't find a candidate that we're really happy with? I think that hiring a, an executive search firm right now is, I mean, are we willing to do that right now? Or do we want to say if we don't find a candidate in the first round, that's when we look into spending the money? And, because I think that that right, right, you might have to poach somebody. I don't know that you'll get somebody still looking for a job over the summer. I, I don't know what the timing is on all of that, but I think that, that's a lot of commentary right now, so I'm sorry, leave it at that, but yeah, I guess in terms of the, the timing, like how, how far are we willing to go right now? How long are we willing to search for? I would rather wait until we get the right person than settle on someone.
We actually have some good candidates, and they are from different parts of the country. They're not all from this area, and some are, I believe, Colleen, McAndrews, some are from down around the south, aren't they?
Right, we have
We do have some.
Candidates, we do, from Georgia, Florida.
Tennessee, I think.
Tennessee, yep, Tennessee, Connecticut. We probably have five or six that are in that area, Tennessee, Florida, Georgia.
So the word has gotten out somehow, some way. And I know, as I shared, I think with Colleen recently, I did speak to a person that's involved with the Latino Hispanic community. And that person is sharing the application and the posting with his group. So he said he did have a couple people in mind he could share with. And he's familiar with Newport.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Leary.
Mr. Galvin, I have some questions for you. So what, with the new state law, what is the involvement in this process?
Mr. Leary, Mr. Galvin has left. If, if you want, you can, we can get the questions to him and get you answers, but he is, he usually gets off after the action items.
All right, because I have some serious questions here that need, and I, I've asked them, and when I get to the end of meeting, I ask to be, be fair. So we have to, we get a vote on this kind of, you won't know if he's going to answer these questions, Mr. Galvin goes back? Did I ask him? I'll email him questions tomorrow. I'm, I'm, I'm I'm extremely concerned, like Ms. Winslow is with this process and getting the right person, you know. A lot of people want to fluff things up all the time, but since the death of Jamie Crowley left, we've had nobody there that's been real good. So we, we need to get this right. And I don't know what our process is. I know 4620 doesn't give us much, our policy number doesn't give us much right. So I'm gonna ask him at the end of the type meeting, for when you have the agenda items for the Policy Committee to review 46 Policy 20, to give us some rights back. I will email Mr. Galvin tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question? Dr. Flowers.
Well, it's kind of a question that you know, we're getting halfway through March. And while it seems like there's, you know, you've hit that 100 days of the school year. You you have to get that transition of a new person working with the people who are in there now. You just don't pop in in late August and, you know, that's an exaggeration, but someone has to become acclimated to the place, even for someone who's next door. It seems there's been, the net has been cast rather wide in, in securing good candidates. And I would I have to disagree to say that the people who have been in place are less than professional. We have professionals who have been in place and are in place running Thompson Middle School, as with the other buildings too. It's just that there is an opening. You want to get the best possible person for the position. We have a lot of factors to look at. We certainly trust the HR department to handle that as well as Dr. Jermaine. But again, we, it's not, it's not really, doesn't, it's a rush. It means that this is the process you go through. And you have to give whoever comes in time to be really familiar, so that he or she is not overwhelmed at the very beginning of, of that person's position. I have confidence in what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments on the process? Ms. Winslow?
Sorry to be a stick in the mud here. I feel like I either missed it or or what, but I mean, if, let's say we go through this round of candidates and just not feeling that this is the right person, what's our next step?
Readvertise.
I think to Dr. Flowers' point, you'd have to re-advertise, and we'd have to
Are we willing to have another year? Is, you know?
We don't have any, I think we would have to look into that if we get into that position, but we don't have someone at this time, no.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments from anybody? Ms. Winslow?
Um, I think I, I just don't, I, I was curious how the process for like coming up with, I know we have the policy now with how we create the selection committee that gets to read resumes or do the interviews. Actually, maybe you can help me understand that, but I I just want to emphasize that I hope that that committee is made up of some parents who are not just English speakers, right, that represent Newport, that can interact with this candidate and, and you know, in a, in Spanish or whatever that other language might be to and, and really get their, get their approval on who goes forward. So like, what is the process going to be to, to come up with that interview committee?
Clearly, clearly, the policy does state that school improvement team members from Thompson Middle School would be considered as well as other community members. And I believe we would want the people on the interview committee to represent our children and our families. So that, to me, that's like a given. And we, if I remember, then I think there's administrator on there and HR, but it's really the HR director will be overlooking the composition of that group, and we can certainly share that with you before we even start the process and go forward so that you can see that. And then there'll be a series of screenings as far as applications. And then I would imagine there'll be some rounds. We might even have, especially in the era of Zoom, we can have preliminary meets on Zoom, meeting with people, having conversations. I look at it very similar to what we do for the School Building Committee, and we have a working group that looks over everything, makes the recommendations, and then, you know, it'd be very transparent as far as our steps and what we do. Be happy to bring back an update on where we are next April, next month, see where we are, and not a year from now, but next, at the next meeting, but we can definitely, in the updates, we'll keep you posted, and I'll have Director McAndrews, she'll provide updates for us as well. And I'm, I'm happy to have an offline conversation with everyone and anyone.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? And we'll get everybody's questions answered. All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
We're gonna move along.
Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you again. Let's see. Next item on the discussion was a discussion that I asked to be placed on, on an MC3 curriculum. MC3 curriculum is a curriculum for our, through our NACTEC programs that it's in the trades, and it gets students that take the curriculum, it's a, it's a opportunity, and it's a pathway towards jobs in the various trades, carpentry, electrical, plumbing, all various trades. But we had had a discussion scheduled. We weren't able to get the person to lead that discussion with us this evening, so I'm gonna kind of continue that until April in hopes that we can get a better discussion and possibly some feedback. So we're working on that. So I apologize for that, but we're gonna have to continue the MC3 curriculum to April. So that would get us down into our consent agenda. Consent agenda is, would be a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. I see Ms. Winslow, seconded by Ms. Boatright. I'm just wondering, as I look up, did we lose Sandra? I don't know if, seems like we've, yeah. I'm not quite sure if
I'll text her.
We'll give her a minute, yeah, we'll give her a minute text. But anyhow, I just noticed that as I'm looking up from reading the, so we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Are there any questions on the consent agenda items? Not seeing any. I'd ask Mrs. Nash to do a roll call vote to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mr. Goems?
Aye.
Mrs. Boland?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
I'll come back to Dr. Flowers. Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
We can just, we'll just, Maureen is excused at the moment or something. We'll just continue and hopefully
I don't see her in the waiting room either.
I can't get her.
Yeah, we'll work on that, hopefully.
Okay.
But that's okay, that
She's responding to me, but I'll let you know, it's just flipping, so I'll let you know as soon as
Well, we have, we still have a quorum, so we're okay to vote in. Go ahead.
Just so you say, she's trying to get in because she lost her signal, so she should be coming back.
Okay, but we still have a quorum, so the vote is legal and we can move on. Hopefully she'll get back in. That gets us through the consent agenda. The next item is eight, which is correspondence. We have several correspondence. We have the School Building Committee meetings, we have various school building committees and such. So is there a motion to approve and accept the correspondence as presented this evening? Ms. Boatright, seconded by Ms. Boland. Any questions or concerns on the correspondence? Ms. Winslow?
Sorry, I'm looking for it now, but there was a there's a a drop in the, the fund 60, I don't know if Mr. Gonzalez is still on the line and can explain, there's something happened with lunch, with the COVID relief funds and the lunch, the money that we usually recuperate or, right, and I don't know, I, maybe I'm dreaming and it wasn't here because I, my notes are not good on this one, but
Could it possibly be in the finance letter, the monthly fin?
That's in the finance.
That's in finance.
Okay. On number two, on the February 16th note, the meeting, I don't know if anybody could explain kind of what's going on there.
Sure, I can elaborate maybe a little bit on our food service program. Sure, I can elaborate maybe a little bit on our food service program. With so many children out of school, we have less traffic, less foot traffic, less meals being sold, less à la carte. I mean, we are in buildings of about half capacity. So for the first few months of the year, we saw a significant decline in sales, obviously, but we still had costs. We still have a responsibility as a district to have lunches available to children getting educated. So we can't, we can't just stop the program. We've come up with some mitigation processes to help, try best to help break even in our lunch service program. But right now, we're not at a break even point. We are, we were experiencing a small deficit month after month and February was our first black balance month. We were not in the red any longer in February. So that's, that's what that is. We were recouping, we're looking at approximately a small deficit of about $200,000. We began fiscal year 2020 with a deficit a little bit larger than that and through the year, we recouped enough money to shrink that deficit by almost six figures. Okay, so we're looking at that now, we're looking at alternative options to help eliminate the impact to our general fund, to our district. Right now, we are discussing that on a weekly basis. And today, we brought in our food service management company to help, you know, explore and iron out wrinkles, to give us a flavor of what's happening in other districts, to, again, to try to mitigate and minimize the impact to us, the negative impact, financial impact. I hope that was enough.
Yeah, so it's really like that kids aren't coming to school to buy lunches, even the free and reduced lunches?
Yes, so there's a lot of moving parts, okay? A lot of moving parts. And in a normal year, we use the National School Lunch Program year, day to day, and we also serve à la carte menu items. So we have a reimbursable process where a student comes in and gets a lunch and it's three bucks and that's reimbursed. And this year, we don't have any of the à la carte and we are at less than half capacity. So we simply don't have the volume of sales or meals served. And there are some waivers in place right now where we're only counting the meals served and we're using the summer food service program, which allows some more flexibility to basically everybody that's under eighteen. We also have some competition where the government put out a P E B T card when children are not physically in school, they have the option to not come to our distribution site, but in fact, take the debit card and purchase a meal somewhere else.
I had heard that piece too, so thank you. All right, that makes sense now.
It's a big thing, it's a big thing happening.
And though, if I can just speak, I, because I put those minute, meeting, the minute, the meeting minutes out and just to try to be transparent so people know what's going on, but there is a lot of work going on to try to, to write, you know, to correct issues as they are determined. So it's to keep people in the loop.
I thought somebody else, did I see somebody else had a question? No, maybe I'm dreaming that. Okay, Ms. Winslow?
I'll ask another one, right? There's, Congress is voting, right, as we speak on a new rescue package. There will probably be, hopefully be some money for the schools in there, right? I don't know the details, I don't know what you're following, but I mean, there's gotta be other districts facing this exact, you know, deficit in their lunch program and stuff. And so I don't know if you know if anything called out in that or even our budget overall. If it's too soon to know any details.
That's exactly it. It is a little bit too premature in this school year, really, to come up with an accurate fund balance for the end of the year and our ears are open. We tie in weekly, business managers statewide with RIDE, with RIDE Finance, to help us understand the various pots of COVID cares monies that are coming through. So you know, maybe in a few more weeks, sometime in April, we'll hear some more about the next pot of money. And I think in even, maybe in three or four more months, there may be a whole new pot available. I don't have more than that this year, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know that we have any more questions based on correspondence. So is your, there's a motion to accept the correspondence. So Ms. Nash, could you do a vote to accept the correspondence as presented?
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Boland?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
And Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you, seven zero.
That might be easier, maybe we'll just go to thumbs up and thumbs down. Nobody will have to unmute, be a lot quicker.
Yeah, sorry, my whole screen went blank, I couldn't, I couldn't unmute.
So that, that's correspondence. That brings us into the reports from superintendent and staff and the first two, our expenditure and revenue reports and the public schools restricted grant reports. So Mr. Gonzalez, you're still on that hot seat, so go right ahead.
All right, okay, thank you again, Mr. Gomes. So I'm just gonna touch very quickly on a question from Mr. Leary earlier on in regards to our windows. Windows are going to be the budget for the cost, the twenty-four eight is in object code fifty-four, three, one, two. And I believe that's on page three of the expenditure listing. To date, we've spent approximately a hundred and seven K in that line. I have forecasted for the full year that we'll use all the money. You know, when we get closer to May and early June, will, those will shake out, we'll get better estimates, but for right now, it's included in the year end and that's where the money has been budgeted for us, okay, to cover the Thompson discussion earlier. I'm gonna stop with that and open the floor. Are there any specific questions or areas that you'd like other discussion?
So, any questions? No?
Enough information's coming out in the memo, I think, maybe.
Well, the memo always is a good job. The memo's a.
I already answered my only question, so. Of the lunches.
All righty. Any questions on the grants for Mr. All right, well, thank you. Think we're all right for tonight. That leads us down into, we get Dr. Jermaine on the hot seat, gets us into enrollment demographics and homeless report.
Does the committee have any questions on those?
Mr. Leary, go right ahead. Could you give us the monthly number with the number students are down?
I believe. I'm sorry, Mr. Leary, I heard you say.
I think his question was how many?
Sorry. I think it was one fifty-eight students last, last month. Is that still the same or going up or going down?
Between last month and this month, we have, there are fewer students, there's about fifteen, I believe, less, but it's fluctuating up and down at all times.
So now we've got a hundred and seventy-five less students than last year?
I'd say approximately, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I will for the public and Mr. Leary, just the, the biggest gaps we're seeing are in kindergarten, many, much, there's fewer kindergarten students than most years and that's statewide. And in PK, we're seeing a lesser amount of children. They're the biggest gap.
Yeah, I see what we, just last month in February, right, thirteen transferred out and ten transferred in.
Yeah.
Right, it's unbelievable how, how fluid that is.
Very mobile, about twenty percent.
Any other questions, comments on the enrollment demographics and homeless report? All righty, we're gonna move over for Mr. Young's wrap up for his night here with the facilities update. I'm not sure if.
He's here.
I see him, I see him pop up, he's good. If you want to give a little overview, anything you want to point out and then we'll take some questions.
This is a quick turnaround from the last one, not much to report on this one. I think the big thing over the last month really was snow. You know, it seemed like for what, a ten or twelve day period, it snowed like every other day. So the guys were out there, you know, plowing, snowing, doing some other things. I do want to add that all the custodians at Thompson and Rogers High School received some asbestos training, you know, how to identify asbestos, you know, in the buildings if they did see it, which is something that we were a little behind on. And we're also scheduled, we have some professional development for the leads next week, Tuesday, for some safety tra, training given by the, by the trust. That's it for this one.
I just have a question. I think I've seen some emails, the motives for the Thompson, I think those are starting to show up.
They're, they're in hand now, okay? We have three in hand, we have a tracking number for the other four, which will give us a two, two extra in case they go down, we'll have them standing by and ready to go. So they should be installed by the end of the week, if not Monday.
Great.
Yeah.
And yeah, Ms. Boatright, go right ahead.
I know we had approved to have the auditorium structural assessment done. Has that been, have you received the report or can you give us an update?
He's not, he's not done yet. We just recently spoke this morning, but he did, his early preliminary findings are that it's structurally sound, it's habitable. He seems to think that, you know, some of the damage in there happened, it might have happened like the first year, you know, that the first snowfall on top of the building and it settled a little bit, they went back and filled it and then they put the plywood on there just to cover it up. But his initial findings is that it's fine, we're gonna be good, especially just for the next, you know, four years. He thinks we're gonna be okay. He's not done yet, he's got one more check on Thursday morning to go back up, but just his initial kind of feedback is that it's, it's habitable, it will be until the new school, the new school is built.
Thank you, thank you.
And he, he'll be passing, and of course, he'll pass on a final report.
Yeah, it'll be a detailed final report, but those are just his initial, just kind of things. He spoke to me this morning.
Any other questions or comments? All righty, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Young, have a good night. Let me get to, where are we? That brings us into distance learning, distance learning, in-person learning report. Dr. Jermaine, I think you have some updates on that, no? Not sure if you're surprised? All right.
Okay, now I'm back on.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for waiting. Let's see, I, I don't know if I have any updates as far as we're bringing back as many children as possible and any that have been asking, but you'll see our numbers that we have right here through two twenty-four and two twenty-six. Nothing's dramatically, in my opinion, has changed. We, we were at a high earlier in the year in November, about seven hundred fifty-three. We're at about seven hundred thirty-seven now at Pell for the total enrollment. But if you look at the in-person learning, you'll notice that especially in the grade four, we increased in-person learning, grade three, we did, grade two, grade one. So Pell's been trying as much as possible to bring children back. And if you look at Thompson, you're going to see the same thing for, all along the board. If you look at the numbers at the bottom for IPL, grade fives remained, you know, somewhat steady, but the rest, as many children as we can bring back in. We are, at the high school level, it's been fluctuating, how many are in person with us and not at times. And I will share with you that athletics has had a big impact on that as well. The team members have decided, they went to distance learning for a while there because they didn't want to get positive or contact tracing be put out of isolation. So we have had our athletes go out for a while and then come back. So we'll see what happens in the spring.
Dr. Jermaine, just a couple of things. So actually, this is somewhat reflective, I know we have several classes out today, so this, that number's reflected, that could be some of that volatility in the number as well, correct? They come in and out?
Absolutely, if they stay out for a period of time, but yes, absolutely. And the volatility for the audience is, over the weekend, we did find out at Pell Elementary School, we had three positive cases, one in a kindergarten and two in two separate grade fours. And after long discussions with RIDO over the weekend, it was recommended that we close both classrooms until March twenty-second.
And then my follow-up to that is, we don't have, we, do we, we don't have any students that have expressed the desire to be in person, that have not been able to come in in person? In other words, we don't have like a waiting list?
We do.
Okay.
We do. We have two in grade two and we're trying to get those two children in, but we do have two. And that, that was, I think, in the past week and a half, two weeks. So we do have two children, yes.
But it's only two out of the whole, two in two grade two and all that are waiting to, that we want to be in person.
That's correct. That's it, yes.
Dr. Flowers, go right ahead.
It's because you can't fit them into the rooms, is that?
That's exactly it. To safely continue the CDC guidelines, that is it exactly. And we have, as a state and as an organization, RISA Superintendent, we have been requesting of RIDE, the commissioner and RIDO, seeing if they could help us in those areas. They've actually set up special task forces to look at particularly busing and classroom distancing. So we're hoping in the next, we were hoping by this week, but we're hoping in the next couple of weeks, we'll get some relaxed guidance. Is there anything else?
Now, at the high school, they, the students move between rooms.
Correct, there is no such thing as stable pods at the high school level because each child takes what coursework they want to take. But we do maintain the six feet, the masks, the social distancing, the hand washing and the, the air ventilation. So we do do that.
You know, they can't carry the laboratories from one to the other.
They cannot.
But they, yeah, I think we have to give the kids credit for probably using their heads more than some adults do in the world too, so. It's, I've said this in other meetings, places that I've been, we can't say enough about the work that everyone has done, everyone, trying their best. And once everyone gets the vaccinations, you know, we just hope things settle down somewhat, but, you know. And someone has said too, that even other kinds of germs be, it's been a little bit less this year because everyone's wearing masks, so out of everything, something good comes.
So you brought up the vaccine, so this Saturday at C C R I, the Newport Public School employees and people that work in the schools, they do have the opportunity to sign up for vaccines that will be going out to those that are school-based employees or. That will be going out to those that are school-based employees or work in the schools. And it's very important that no one shares their link. We've been told not to share the links. And Saturday will be the first round. And then, I believe, holy Thursday, right before Easter, will be the second shot vaccination for the group.
That's good.
It shouldn't be able to be done in one day. Yes, they have a very, well, it's two days of doses, yes. But right now, the preliminary schedule we saw this afternoon, Ms. Nash and I were looking at it. They sent it to us and the links so we could make sure everything worked. Right now, it looks like, yes, they'll be able to do them all in one day for the Newport group.
Is it the double dose one, or you don't know yet?
It's double dose. It's a, we, we need two shots. It's Pfizer. It's going to be the Pfizer vaccine.
So we're talking bus drivers and everybody else too, or that's great?
Food service providers, bus drivers, student teachers, people that are working in the classrooms, yes, and in the buildings.
Great.
Hold on for a minute. I'm going to get Mr. Dring's been kind of bumped a couple of times, so I'm going to get Mr. Dring in there.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, Ms. Jermaine, I just have a couple of questions. One, you know, with the teachers getting vaccines, everybody getting vaccines, with other schools going back, do you have an expectation that the kids can go back to school this year? If so, is there, is there some kind of a plan to get the kids back into school?
So, so our kids have always been in school since it started. It's just that we're not in every day. We, we have a full-time for PK through four, and we've been in the hybrid for six through 12. The short answer is yes. We are having further discussions. We want to be able to do it safely. And we also have a survey that's going out tomorrow to our families and students to see if they do want to be coming back more often. So if you're, for instance, and the high school's been, Mr. Vance and Mr. Monahan have been good about this. For some kids who wanted to come in four days a week, or thought they had to come in four days instead of the two and two, they have been able to help those students. But in order to bring more back, as Mr. Vance and I discussed this morning, we have to really look at the social distancing and the spacing of the desks. So we are looking into it. We are going to send out the survey tomorrow. We're going to ask that people get back to us by next Monday, just to get, gather the data and see what's going on. I know Mr. Leary brought up Cranston, and I believe in my weekly update, I shared that with you. The Cranston schools, since the beginning of the year, had only had PK through one in, PK in K or PK through one, going to school every other day or going back to school. And then grades two through 12 were actually on hybrid in Cranston. So the Cranston community was like, we got to get the kids back in more. So we're all trying our best and doing it as safely as possible. But to your point about getting kids into school more often, and we are working on that and having discussions.
Ms. Boatright, I think you were right behind Mr. Dring. If he was all set, are you all set, Mr. Dring? Okay. Ms. Boatright, you were next, then. I think Ms. Winslow had a question.
I was the one who jumped in. I apologize.
Oh.
I was the bad one. I apologize, Mr. Dring.
So Ms. Winslow, you're a-
I was just curious if you had good participation for the vaccine? Like, did everybody sign up, or, you know, are there a lot of people that are-
No, it's interesting. We were, we had under 200, I think. Is that right, Ms. Nash? She has, but we also have quite a few that have already had their first shot in other, in their arm at different locations throughout the state. So, yeah, quite a few have already gotten their shots.
Great. All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns on distance learning, in-person learning? Okay. That brings us to final two categories, district goals 2021 and superintendent updates on partnerships, collaborations, and personnel. Any questions for Dr. Jermaine on those categories?
I'll just, I'll just say for the public, what the committee, what the committee is saying, I'm, I'm following Mr. Leary's motto. For the public, just so everyone knows, there's a color-coded sheet with the district goals that the committee sees. And the team, meaning the principals, the directors, I in some cases, will color-code it to show where we are on those goals. And, and there are usually little comments about what's going on in professional development, et cetera.
Excellent. Any questions following that? Comments? All righty. Motion would be in order to accept the report as presented. I see Ms. Winslow, seconded by Ms. Boatright. So Ms. Nash, would you roll call vote to accept the report as presented?
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Spohlen?
Aye.
Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero.
That would bring us into meeting dates and agenda items. And we have many meetings for the school building committee to be announced that they, as they come along. We have a meeting Thursday night at 5:00 PM to vote on the recommendation of school building committee for the architectural engineering for Rogers. School building committee's coming up. And of course, our next regularly scheduled school committee meeting on April 13th. And Ms. Winslow, do you have a question, comment, concern?
I have a question.
Go right ahead.
I didn't want to wait until there was the motion, sorry. I, so our next meeting is April 13th, and that's going to be after what, I guess, the, the day we've scheduled for the RICAS testing. And I just, I, I don't know if we have a special meeting where we could discuss it, or, you know. I just read, you know, yesterday in the Daily News about how other districts have asked to maybe host the tests in the fall or just do, you know, some, I think Massachusetts is going to push it till like the very last second. I, I don't know. Is Newport thinking about anything like that? Has there been pushback from parents and teachers on spending a day doing the testing, you know, right away on schedule in March? I, I don't know where the rest of the state stands, and if we have time to even talk about it before that date comes up.
All right. So we don't have a choice as to whether or not we implement the state assessment. How we do it, we do have a choice. And right now, the state of Rhode Island is requiring all of us to implement the full assessments at each of the grade levels. We are looking into a calendar in March, I believe it's starting in March, on Mondays, that our distance learning children would come in. And that, that would be the day that the children that are on distance learning would take their assessments. Then, according to the grade level, alphabet, et cetera, we would then implement the testing for the grade levels accordingly. It is a lot of time that puts, especially for the middle school level, grades five through eight, that puts the children on distance learning while the children in the building are taking the standardized tests. Many assistant superintendents, curriculum people, superintendents, we have all shared our displeasure, don't think it's a good idea, can we delay? But the commissioner does want to implement the assessment. She does believe it's important. And our federal funding will be tied into this as far as showing the need. And that is what we are being told is part of the reason for having to fulfill the obligation of giving the state testing.
There's no option to delay it till the fall or something like that? We have to have it by the end of March or this school year, or-
We have to, I believe, RIDE just, just extended it out, I think, till the end of May, beginning of June, for the school districts. But no, we are not being given the option of the shortened test or of being able to do it in the fall, right now, at this moment. And I always preface it with that because you never know what will happen in two days. But at this moment, we are not being offered that opportunity.
Okay. Dr. Flowers?
Yeah, I mean, I have mixed feelings about this. You know, I'm looking at it from a couple of different angles. That reading some of the statements from the commissioners, you're getting a baseline probably to see how much loss has occurred. Are there pockets of, maybe not that much, pockets of extreme loss? If you waited until fall, there might be even more so. We know what happens over the summer. And if you waited until the fall, then you're getting the students in with the whole new set of teachers. And that might be problematic. If you wait until too late in the school year, we know what happens. Some people tend to, especially if, if the ability to travel comes up, that could cause some problems too. It, it's, it's a tough choice. The toughest, to me, from what I can see, the toughest part is someone's, I don't know how they're going to work it out, but some people are going to be monitoring testing in person and then working with the kids in the distance learning, and therein is the, is the issue. We know we have very creative people in the system, but, like I say, I can't say enough about what they do. But for the, the kids who have been out consistently in distance learning, therein is your problem of getting them in. You know, we understand that. As I say, we, we need some sort of a baseline. But in testing time, it can be nerve-wracking in the best of cir, of circumstances, so.
And any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leary?
Oh, I'm going to send a thing out for the policy committee to review policy 4620. And I'll have Mr. Gobin contact you if you can set up a meeting. If Mrs. Flowers sets up a meeting, a policy committee reviewed awarding 4620.
Okay, wonderful. Any other questions, comments?
Get that again.
Mr. Leary has-
Yes.
He has some policies. He had-
Policy 4620.
Mr. Leary has some policies he's going to forward to you, Dr. Flowers, for review of the policy committee.
One.
One. Okay. Sorry, I thought I heard-
We've been reviewing quite a bit, yes.
Okay. Mr. Dring?
Yeah, Dr. Flowers and I have gone back and forth on 4620. I, I have a couple of emails into Dr. Flowers. I haven't heard back from her yet. But I think she had mentioned that we were going to discuss that at our next policy meeting, which she was trying to set up, I think.
And Mr. Dring, that's on me on Friday. Dr. Flowers did contact me, and I was pretty busy all the way through, very late on Friday. So that's on me too, because I'll be happy to talk to you too, because Dr. Flowers did reach out to me on Friday.
Sure.
We'll- Okay. Very well. That brings us into no executive session, which gets us down to the, the golden number 13, which is adjournment. I'm glad we're all sitting down, seeing as it's 7:49. We're actually 11 minutes early. So you've all done a good job tonight getting us here 11 minutes early. So you can all go have dinner. So motion to adjourn is made, and I'll do a roll call vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And have a good evening, everybody, and thanks for being here.
Bye-bye.
Take care all. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.